All right, we're going to call to order the May 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Mr. Cody Yarwood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening, so we'll ask the city attorney to provide a brief synopsis of the outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met with city attorney and legal counsel to discuss the case of George Louis versus the City of West Sacramento. The council approved a settlement agreement. The terms include the city making certain accessibility improvements to intersections and parks within the city over a 15-year period, and the payment of a nominal amount to the plaintiff.
All right, with that, we'll proceed to our regular agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is noted on our agenda that state law prohibits us from taking any action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it does provide an important opportunity for a public forum. And we asked that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available near the front door, and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the chance to be heard, and to that end, we asked that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can induce some anxiety, and so we ask that there not be any demonstrations, or boos, or cat calls, or applause, and that we just maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. As we get to each of the regular agenda items, as soon as the staff report is concluded, we will cease taking the yellow cards for that item. So if you know in advance that you would like to speak on an item that's later on our agenda, please get the card in as soon as you can, but as I say, we cut that off as soon as the staff presentation is complete. With that, we do have two requests to speak under item 1A. The first is by Eric Flick and Denise Seals, on behalf of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, and good evening, city councilmen, mayor. My name's Eric Flick, and we're here, as you noticed, to update you and talk about Shop Local Campaign a little bit. I'm a local business owner. My wife and I run a grocery store here in town. We also live in West Sacramento, and I'm the second vice chair on the West Sacramento Chamber Board of Directors.
Eric, this is not Star Search. You can say your business name. It's fine, and give a little promotion.
Well, thanks for the plug. Grocery outlet. We own and operate Grocery Outlet. We've been here for about nine years, but most importantly, we're very involved in the community in the chamber, and the Shop Local Campaign has been a pretty neat opportunity to really get this vision of everybody thinking locally, shopping locally, and realizing all the options we have here in town. So we started this about a year ago, and what we have is we have a concept and a logo, a website, shopinwestsac.com. Shop local, think local. You guys have probably seen the logo around town. We've distributed about 1,000 of these door decals in local businesses. We had a team of about 12 people go out and canvass the town. Retail-style businesses, we got them in front windows. We've also had a press release. Some, I know, the mayor and council member, Viegas, you were both present there for that last year. We've also had periodic ads in some of the local papers. City Lights is, I think, every issue thus far has had a blurb in there, and then we've also been in some of the utility bill inserts. So we're really trying to get the word out and create the awareness of the campaign. We've also done outreach with the Los Rios College here, and trying to make sure that students are aware of what's available locally on Merkley and West Capitol Avenue. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Denise, and she's going to continue.
Get this down. Thank you. So what's next? Next on the agenda with Shop Local is the -- we will be refining the website to include multiple category listings for West Sacramento business license holders. We're producing 10,000 countercards to distribute in local businesses to make sure that, you know, their clients understand the concept of Shop Local and encourage that. And then we're beginning a major employer outreach campaign. Beginning tomorrow, we'll have a series of focus groups. With tomorrow's focus group involves employees of UPS and CalSters, both West Sac residents and non-West Sac residents from all over the strata of their organizations, to find out some of their habits and to get a better focus for how we might drill in with a campaign in those major focus, those major employer groups. And then on May the 20th, we are having a Shop Local Riverwalk Expo up between CalSters and DGS, and free to the community, and everyone is invited.
Thank you. Mr. Kristoff?
No.
Thank you very much. This is -- it's an important campaign, and I know folks have been exposed to this for over a year now, but we can't stress, especially with the court ruling yesterday from the Sacramento Superior Court on redevelopment and the millions, literally millions of dollars that that's going to cost our community immediately and into the future, that this campaign is essential. But it's not just about the tax revenues. We care about that because we can't provide police and fire services, and keep the parks open, and preschool, and everything else in our community without local businesses. We don't print money here. We depend on people shopping and paying taxes here. But just having a good quality of life and a wide variety of businesses and restaurants and shops that we can enjoy depends on us shopping there. And so it really is critical that we support local businesses so that we can maintain the quality of life in our community, and the character, and the identity, and the uniqueness of our community. And so it's a very important campaign, and we at the city have been very supportive of it, and the chamber's leadership in this regard has been really, really stellar. So we can't emphasize enough how important Shopping Local really is, both for the businesses, for our neighbors and friends and family members that work in local businesses, and for essential public services here in our community. Mayor President Viegas?
No, I was just going to just -- you said it well. I think you've done a wonderful job, both Denise and Eric. I know it's difficult to take on these kinds of projects. You have your own business to run, but you spend a lot of time, everybody knows, you spend a lot of time with the meetings, with Denise and the chamber, and the other folks that have helped put this together. But you guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you very much for the work. It's turning out real good. And I think, you know, for folks who may not know, this has been going on for, I think you mentioned, a little over a year now, but it's not a all-at-once. It's kind of a -- it's a long process that sort of gets bumped up and ramped up as funds and resources become available. And I think, as folks have seen, there's little by little that's starting to get, starting to permeate into the community, that folks are starting to learn what, in fact, we have here to offer for folks who are thinking about shopping maybe across the river or otherwise. There's a lot to be had here. So folks are learning that little by little, thanks to your good work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Marissa Haynes?
Hi. What I have is a totally different situation. It's a nuisance situation. I have duplexes rebuilt next to my property, which is on Walnut Street off of West Capitol Avenue. And for the past year, the nuisance has been getting worse, and nothing's been done about it. At all hours of the night, mostly weekdays, but it's mostly weekends, cars in the duplex are always using my driveway to park. They are constantly doing U-turns. I have cars that are parked line by line in front of my house at all hours of the night. I hear it. It's loud music. There's loitering at all hours in the morning. You have to go out and do like a garbage pickup because it gets pretty bad. My work hours vary. I work nights, sometimes day. And it's getting to the point where I'm getting concerned for my safety and the vandalism that I have to deal with, and nothing's really being done. I've done complaints to the police department, and I'm not sure what to do at this point.
Okay, well, we're going to take this to the highest levels of the police department. The chief of police is right behind us, and so once we're completed right here, if you would step back and if the chief would spend a few minutes with Ms. Haynes about these issues and make sure that they get dealt with. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, chief. But those are our only requests under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item -- oh, the chief is at the back corner. Thanks, Mr. Kristoff. Item 1B is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The housing, actually, the city county two-by-two met on April 28th, and the main issues of discussion were, of course, the effect of the ongoing reassessment of property taxes. But also, there's a couple of discussions on what to do about shared services or opportunities to discuss shared services in the future. You probably are aware that Plaster County and other counties are looking at, for example, combining SWAT teams, rather than each city having a SWAT team, but having a county-wide SWAT team. So there seems to be a discussion going. I believe this is at the city manager level within the county, and looking at these types of opportunities as a way to reduce costs. The Youth Resource Coalition had a meeting on April 27th. This is really just an announcement that this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00 in Elkhorn Park, there's going to be the first urban food stand in West Sacramento. And this is kind of a precursor to a farmer's market, basically fresh produce. So if anybody has an inkling for fresh fruit and vegetables, go to Elkhorn Park. This is actually in conjunction with Alchemist, which is an urban fruit stand organization out of Sacramento, the Brighton-Brobert Community Action Network, and the Youth Resource Coalition. And finally, the Housing Development Corporation met on April 15th, and outside of routine issues, the main issue was to try to decrease the vacancy in the properties of the Housing Development Corporation by doing a survey as to the needs of the individuals that are in these units, and to find a way to maybe augment not only the rental but provide certain services. For example, not necessarily job training, but job advertisement, you know, maybe having legal clinics there, and different types of services that would make these units more attractive to help decrease vacancies.
Are there reports or communications? Mr. Kristoff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Regional City Financing Authority met last week. We had elections to officers. They stayed the same as they were before, and the good news is the lockbox is full. All the bills are paid, and all payments are up to date.
Since our last meeting, Mr. Johansson and I traveled to Washington, DC for the annual region cap-to-cap advocacy trip, and I had the honor of being the vice chair for the trip this year. And West Sacramento was definitely quite prominent in the, throughout the trip. A lot of the speakers and the folks that we met with had very, well, one, the fact that they knew us in DC, you know, was impressive, but very positive things to say about a lot of the issues and initiatives that we've been undertaking, and about the team of staff and private sector partners and others that have been working on those. So it was, and I think Mayor Johnson did one of the receptions and had similar things to say as well about the community. So it was very positive from a sort of city interregional relationship perspective, and also in DC. We met with, I was in meetings with the Department of Transportation around a variety of topics, but including the streetcar project, where they indicated that they now anticipate releasing the streetcar, the Urban Circulator Grants for Street Cars in June of this year. We were hearing rumors of that plus or minus a month, but June is a positive step, and we still know nothing else. They are quite tight-lipped about what will be emerging out of the, just under 20 applicants for those funds, but I think we remain hopeful. We went with FEMA about floodplain mapping and a variety of other issues, and the reauthorization of the statute that underlies FEMA's mapping and insurance program, and about the need to have some additional flexibility in the way that the existing regulations are interpreted. We were really focused on a set of issues, including the one about, as councils are aware, you know, the requirements for alternative zone designations that depend on, you know, at least a certain proportion of the money being authorized, and at least a certain proportion of the money being appropriated, and at least a certain amount of the project being done. And that all comes from, that's a legacy of a time in the world when the federal government was the principal, almost exclusive funder of levy improvements. And it's not really clear today what the words "authorized" and "appropriate" mean when it's people like the citizens of West Sacramento paying a sales tax, or a property assessment, or developer impact fee to support those. That doesn't fit, and so we've been working for the last, over a year, on that issue, but had some very productive meetings with FEMA, the key congressional leaders and others on that issue as well. Met with the Army Corps of Engineers about our levy program and our continuing pressing to accelerate as much as possible the levy improvement program that we're undertaking together, and also had a long conversation about the issue of vegetation on the levies. Were witness to a, at least in one of our small meetings, a vigorous debate between members of the corps team around that issue, but it remains unsettled, I think, as the V's reported this week. Went with the White House a couple of times, staff at the White House on a variety of issues, including the White House Executive Order on Floodplain Management that we've talked about here at the council, and the implications that that would have for cities like ours, meaning any city that's near a body of water, which is most of them, across the country. And the White House, frankly, was almost totally unaware of the issue and the implications of the issue, so it was very important that we be there to describe what was really at stake, both for communities like ours, but also for the president's other initiatives on climate change and sustainable communities. We met with Senator Boxer, who was super high on West Sacramento, to the chagrin of most of the other folks in the room. She was, she, her visit to the port was, a couple of weeks ago, was very present in her mind, and so she was able to rattle off all sorts of examples of what West Sacramento was doing, and the other communities in the room were envious, but it was a very good reminder for Mr. Lukin and for others that were involved in that visit that it makes a difference. Because her staff certainly heard that as well. The committee staff heard that, and so our projects on channel deepening and on some of the other issues, initiatives at the port definitely are helped by having the, you know, one of our state's two senators so closely connected to them. And then we met with Congressman Thompson and several other members of the regional congressional delegation. Very positive visit. I've been on several of these cap-to-cap trips, as every member of the council has at some point over the last, you know, decade, decade and a half, and this is one of the most productive ones in terms of advancing our city's interests as well as the regional agenda around these issues. Mr. Johansson, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just briefly add. I know there was a lot of talk back there, particularly among the participants, going on the cap-to-cap at the expense of going back, and particularly this economy, but without an exception, all the meetings that we had, the federal staff were very appreciative of the personal visits that we've made to promote the projects in this region. And I know in my business, for example, with the economy the way it is, it's, advertising is everything right now. You're trying to get as much business as you can with what little is out there. And this is really the way the city can advertise. So it is an expense to have people go back there, but really, I think the mayor mentioned this in a recent interview, that the federal money is really the name of the game now. And so even though it is an expense to send our staff back there, and it was pretty much a skeleton staff that went back, it's hugely, hugely important because that, federal money is what is going to go now to help, you know, with the redevelopment agency hit and a lot of the other issues we're going to have financially, so.
And the two we have pending right now are, you know, more than $8 million for levies and for the channel deepening that are pending right now as part of the consideration of the budget and appropriations bills. And so, you know, absolutely, for the two of us and for two members of the senior executive team that was, is critical to advancing those objectives, but also we just happen to be at the center of a lot of important national issues. Flood zone mapping is just one example of those, way out of scale to our size. But it's actually, I think it's a very strong signal about the work that we have been doing, that people there care about what a small city of less than 50,000 people is doing, but it's because we're in a lot of these areas setting, raising some important national issues and setting some models. So I thought it was really valuable. Mayor President Viegas?
Congratulations. That's always nice to come back feeling like the trip was worth it because it is a lot of work. I just want to let the council know in case it gets any press, and I don't know if it did or not, but I understood that earlier today Supervisor Roger Dickinson had a press conference representing the county of Sacramento relative to the regional, the Sac County Regional Sanitation District Board, and one of the issues that he raised at the press conference was the fact that, well, I say it's a fact, the fact that we, during a period of time during 2004, after the district had utilized some of the bigger financial institutions to issue some auction rate securities to finance a portion of the billion-dollar infrastructure Northwest Interceptor line, there was a period of time in '04 that we were paying, I think it was a 12% interest rate on securities that should have been quite a bit lower. And so I think part of the press conference was the fact that we should have been, or we should be, I think he's calling for us as a board to pursue legal remedies for what occurred during that period of time. So I just want to let the council know that we, that issue has not been vetted completely with our staff and attorneys, and so when that information is gathered and there's a recommendation to be made, it'll come before the board for consideration, but at this point, we're not there yet. But you may get, you may see in the press that others are a little further out ahead of the issue.
All right, any other communications? Once these appointments, and just, we have one, and that's, I'm appointing Councilmember Johansson to the Homeless Executive Committee, Homelessness Executive Committee, that was part of the agreement that we entered into last month. So I'd like to make, these do require, I always forget which is which. So I make that appointment, ask if there's a motion to confirm it.
Motion to confirm? Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and there's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that's the order. That brings us then to our presentation, item two, which is presentation of a proclamation honoring Cody Yarwood for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Mr. Beers moves, and Mayor President Viegas seconds, adoption of the proclamation, seeing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. I'd like to invite Mr. Yarwood to come to the podium for the presentation. All right, this is a proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council honoring Cody Yarwood for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and his proud mama, Linda, who works in the city manager's office, is in the back of the room, ready to take photos. And I, see, Dave Shipak, I don't know if Chris Rosky is here, who have also, am I not smiling? Are you telling him to smile? Okay. I'm seeing this, I'm going. But Chris and Dave have worked very closely with Cody during the process, and so I know they're both very proud of him as well. So, whereas Cody Yarwood, a senior at Delta High School, has been an active member of Boy Scout 43, serving West Sacramento, and whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical choices over their lifetime by instilling in them the values of scouts' oath and law, and whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas less than 4% of all scouts achieve, actually achieve this goal, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America encourage Eagle Scout candidates to complete worthy projects to improve their neighborhoods, their community, and the region, and whereas for his Eagle Scout service project, Cody worked with city staff and prepared a plan to construct a bulletin board and kiosk at Memorial Park in West Sacramento, the very park where he played Little League as a young boy, requiring more than 130 hours of work from Cody, his fellow scouts, family, and friends. And whereas Cody Yarwood, having completed the necessary requirements, and having been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review, has been found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Cody Yarwood's commitment to leadership, service, and to the community is reflected in his steady, persistent progress through the ranks to achieve this prestigious award, and whereas on the 15th day of May 2010, at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Cody Yarwood of Troop 43 in West Sacramento shall receive Boy Scouts of America Highest Honored, the Eagle Scout Award. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of West Sacramento does hereby honor Cody Yarwood of Boy Scout Troop 43 for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America, and encourages him to continue his commitment to excellence. Cody, congratulations. Still not smiling. Okay. That brings us then to our consent agenda, which is items three through 17. We're going to remove item four from the consent agenda altogether and take it up separately. Are there other items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment? Okay, item 10 is consideration of approval of amendment number one to the contract with URS Corporation for the design of the Tower Bridge Gateway East Phase Project. Mr. Johansson?
Yes, who is, Maureen? Okay. Yeah, this, it's really more just a question. My understanding, and this is kind of in conjunction with number 11, where we're trying to find, distinguish between survey services and engineering services and contractor services, to try to create a balance in one of those, kind of a check and balance system when we're doing these types of developments. The only question on 10 is, is there any opportunity here to bring in local firms to do any of this work, for example, the survey work at this point?
Yeah. 10 doesn't actually involve any survey work.
Well, or staking, or?
Number 10 is URS Corporation.
Right.
We are amending the contract with URS Corporation, which has been the design engineer for the Tower Bridge Gateway East project.
Okay.
And so they're continuing with the design work.
Okay.
So they're, it doesn't involve any real subcontracting opportunities.
Okay, well, then, basically, as this project moves along, you know, again, we're trying to emphasize a shop local, think local. So I would suggest, to the extent that we can use any local firms to do any of this work, that we do that outreach, particularly in the professional services area, where we can have a little more flexibility on who we bring in.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, that was it.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Maureen, it's baseball season, and have we coordinated with baseball so when they leave, we can do some work and then, I mean?
The Tower Bridge Gateway project, it's scheduled to start after baseball season.
Oh, after the season?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll still finish on time?
That's the schedule, so it will be on time.
All right, well, I'm just looking at a sign across the street, and we get the, we're successful on the state car money because we're known for being laser-like in our delivery, so I just want to make sure we stay, keep our reputation. Great, okay, thank you. Item 11 is consideration of approval of amendment number two to the contract for professional services with Wood Rogers for the bridge district infrastructure improvements. Mr. Johansson?
Yes, this is really just a comment. I was originally looking at item number 11 also, again, for the shop local, think local, and, you know, Wood Rogers is not really a West Sacramento company, but I understand that Mark Rogers has reached out to the local businesses. But I understand that Mark Rogers has reached out to the local business community here in terms of subcontractors. And I just wanted to commend Mark Rogers for doing that. I know we on council are looking for ways to support our local businesses, and this is an example of someone doing it without really having it forced on them to make that outward effort. So I appreciate that.
Yes, and they will be subcontracting with a local firm.
Good, great.
All right, item 12 is consideration of approval of plans and specifications and contract award for Measure K Elkhorn Broderick Area Street Rehabilitation Project. Mayor Portemvegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maureen, actually, I didn't realize there was a map in here, and I did find it, so I know that Sacramento Avenue, nice map, thank you, by the way, is very helpful to see kind of what's going to be happening. And I think folks will be happy to know that Sacramento Avenue is finally going to get that reconstruction that it needs at the intersection of Jefferson there, so, thank you.
Okay. So that's all the questions and comments on the consent agenda? Is there a motion on the consent agenda, minus item four?
I'll move it, except that staff asked for 13 to be called.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, okay. All right, so with the exceptions of four and 13, it's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item four, it's consideration of second reading of adoption of ordinance 10-8 approving a development agreement between the city and Bridge District Riverfront LLC. And we have a request for comment on this item from Lana Palhemos.
I come here tonight representing the West Sacramento Conservancy, and it has been brought to our attention in regard to this particular item that the Fulcrum, Fulcum, Fulcom?
Fulcrum.
Is a global organization, so they might not know the local history of that particular area that is the district in question for development. And what we just wanted to bring to council's vision is the fact that that area once was incorporated Shafnit's Lodge, which was located in that particular area, and it's also located in this book about the history of West Sacramento. And it's been brought to our attention that there are some heritage oaks and walnut trees that are being threatened for destruction. And we would like the group to reconsider total elimination of the mature foliage in that particular area. I know that Fulcrum Global is a global business, and so they might not be aware of the importance of some of the historical significant spots. And so we feel that those trees would serve as a landmark of a historical past. They are heritage trees, and so I think they should be reviewed more seriously for keeping them in the area. Thank you.
Lana, first, so you're aware, Fulcrum is, maybe they have global in their title, they're in the region.
Right, right.
But where are the trees?
They're located, Tower Drive used to be where Shafnit's Lodge was located, as well as another site in 1930, it was the Welcome Grove Auto Court. And so it was located in that, right off of South River, South River Road. It's not there any longer, and the only thing that's left are the trees. So the walnut tree, and there's several other oak trees which are pretty close to heritage trees. And that's why we want the developers to consider saving them and not having them eliminated.
Well, I'm only asking, because I'm trying to figure exactly where, because the trees on the water side of the levee?
No, they're not, they're closer to, they're underneath the Pioneer Bridge.
Ah, okay, okay. Gotcha.
Where Rayleigh's Field Parking, they're parking there now. So, but they're, you know, pretty significant trees, and we'd hate to see them be eliminated if we can somehow save them.
Okay, so what we have, we've approved the development agreement with Fulcrum already.
Right.
This is a development agreement with a different property owner?
Oh, okay.
That's farther, that's a different location, that's farther north, it's almost at the Tower Bridge.
Oh, it is? So these trees, have they been scheduled to be eliminated at this point?
There are no trees.
Well, there are no trees on this, the property that is under consideration right now, there aren't any of those, of the subject trees there.
Okay.
The trees that you're talking about around Tower Street?
Yes.
I don't know what the, Charlene Hamilton is right behind you, maybe she could give it.
Is that part of?
And that's Fulcrum, that is Fulcrum.
Yeah, that's a Fulcrum development.
Correct. And we approved the Fulcrum Development Agreement two months ago.
Okay, so in that agreement, then, the trees were discussed and their future was also discussed?
Let's find out. When you're done, we'll find out, so.
Okay, because I mean, we really would like to save them. I know there's mitigation that's gone on, but we'd really like to see those mature trees stay around. They look healthy, and an arborist did review the walnut tree, and it looks like it's a healthy tree, so I don't know if there can be some redesign or maybe some way we could save them.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hamilton?
Yes. Not having a map to look at and going by memory, these are in the area on the Fulcrum property near the off-ramp?
Yes.
The US-50 off-ramp and Tower Street. That is where our sewer lift station is planned. We have been coordinating all the tree removals with the city's urban forest manager, Deana Kurtley. And those where there can be some savings, we've been trying to do that. But I think these might be in the area of the sewer lift station.
All right, so it would be our?
But I'll follow up with Deana.
You'll follow up and be able to identify the specific?
Yes.
Because I think there's a concern about the trees with an S, and then there's a particular concern about, you know, one or two of the specific trees, even more than that. And so maybe if we can find out more about, which, I know you haven't gone through all the design work and everything else, but find out more about what the direct implications are.
Yes, I will follow up.
Okay, great. Mayor Portemvegas?
You know, one thing I would add, Ms. Palhemos, you may want to consider meeting with the representatives from Fulcrum. They have expressed interest in preserving elements of the historical aspects of that district. Actually, they're very interested in doing that. And I don't know if they have access to Shipley's book. I'm sure if you shared it with them and maybe gave them, you know, the history 101, I'm sure they would appreciate that and be very interested in incorporating that into their future plans.
Okay, you can't be heard at home, so we have to pretend we can't hear you either. Okay, great, all right. Is there anything else on item four? If not, is there a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mayor Portemvegas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And item four is approved. All right, that brings us then to item 18, which is Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing to Consider Funding Priorities for Fiscal Year 2010-2011. Ms. Collins?
We're here this evening to ask the council to consider conducting a public hearing, the purpose of which is to make residents aware of community development block grant funding that will be available or potentially available in fiscal year 2010-2011, known as CDBG. This funding comes to the city from the state of California. CDBG funds can be used for a number of different purposes. However, they all must be projects or programs that address at least one of the three CDBG national objectives, which are benefit to targeted income households, defined as persons, households at 80% or below of area median income. Secondly, the elimination of slum or blight. And third, urgent need, which in CDBG terms is generally some type of natural disaster such as flood or earthquake. When we get our CDBG funds from the state, the state divides them into two categories. That's general allocation and economic development. So I will start with the general allocation funding expected for the next year. HCD has recently issued a notice of funding availability for general allocation funds, and the city is eligible to apply for up to $800,000. These funds can be used for a number of different purposes: affordable housing, infrastructure for housing, to address, infrastructure that addresses critical health and safety needs, owner-occupied rehab, and other public services that assist low and moderate income persons. The Housing Advisory Commission reviewed potential projects for the coming year and has recommended that the following be prioritized in the following order for the coming year. And first priority would be projects that support the implementation of the Yolo County Homeless Tenure Plan. Secondly, would be projects that support the city's existing neighborhood stabilization program, which is working to reduce the number of vacant and foreclosed homes, primarily in the north side of town. And third would be additional funding for our existing owner-occupied rehab program. The Housing Advisory Commission also had a fourth and fifth recommendation, if the NOFA was delayed this year. But these projects are probably not ready right now and would not score well. And since the NOFA was released earlier than expected, staff does not recommend prioritizing these this year. And those would be projects in support of the Brighton-Broderick Strategy and the affordable housing project planned for the Bridge District within a few years. Do you have any questions on the general allocation funding this year?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Louise, I have one. Earlier in our agenda, we had, I think it was agenda item number five or six, whatever it was. Oh, I know what it was. But it dealt with our HTC, our Housing Development Corporation, and the fact that they've asked for an extension in their loan.
Yes.
And that we haven't, we only have 80% occupancy. Okay? I mean, and they've tried to get people to move in, but they can't find applicants. And the question I have is, is this item going to, are they going to compete? Are they competing for the same thing, and we really don't have, we can't fill up what we have? So are we competing by continuing to move forward with some of the policies that you outlined earlier?
If you're talking about projects that support the implementation of the tenure plan, I think that's a very good question. Paul has left. I don't remember the exact income limits of that project that the HTC is working on, but I believe there, it's around 50% of median income that those are affordable to.
I think you're right.
The tenure plan promotes the development for more housing that's affordable to persons at extremely low income, which is defined as 30% or below of median income. So it would, and also for persons who have been either recently homeless or are vulnerable populations, such as persons with disabilities and that sort of thing. So this is a little, this is a little different population, and it's one that has been identified as in critical need of affordable housing through the tenure plan process.
Okay, okay. Mr. Beers?
Two questions. One, I know last year we applied for funds for mobile home park improvements, and that wasn't approved. We didn't reapply for that, this, or, you know, that wasn't one of the options you presented to reapply for that. Was there a reason we're not going after that same?
Yes, we received in our two, we didn't receive the 2009 grant, but we did receive a 2008 grant that had funds for the mobile home park improvement program. And we've actually had somewhat, had some difficulty getting park owners that were interested. So we do have one application underway, so I think we will be able to use the money that we have in that 2008 grant.
Oh, okay, so there's still something?
But we really don't see a need for additional funds right now.
Okay. Then the second question is, and I think there's, you know, maybe you can help me in terms of the broad CDBG goals, but under general allocation, it says that rehabilitation of community facilities is fundable?
Certain types of facilities, yes.
And so just, the question is, was there any consideration given to looking at the Washington Firehouse as a potential rehab project for that area?
Well, I know you're tired of hearing this, but if we were an entitlement city, that would be a potential project, because it would serve a low-income neighborhood. But because we have to apply to the state and we have to look at their, their need criteria is 300 points out of 1,000 this year, so it's almost a third of the score. And it would not score high on need criteria under their public facilities category, because they give prior, they give points for health and safety issues. Or if, in the, and also, I think another 100 points is for TIG benefit, we would only be able to claim the percentage of people that are low income in that neighborhood. So probably we would only get, we wouldn't get very many of that 100 points either. It is a great project, it would not score well.
What about the Lisbon Firehouse?
Yeah.
Same thing?
That type of public facility?
Okay.
Would not score well.
I don't like that.
Public facilities, yeah, unfortunately.
We just get 5,000 more people to live here.
That's right.
I don't know, the Department of Finance numbers for this year said over 48,000.
Yeah, okay, a couple thousand. I tried nine and a half months ago to encourage people to increase our population in time for the census, but they choose to spend their evenings other ways.
How many people are pregnant? Can we project?
That's what I was working on. Okay, any other questions on that section? Okay.
Okay, so then we'll go to the second category of funding, which is the Economic Development Allocation. These are projects that create or retain jobs for persons primarily from TIG households. The city is usually eligible to apply for two types of funding, if CDBG does funding rounds as they have in the past. The first would be the Economic Enterprise Fund. Last year, we were eligible to apply for $300,000, and we were awarded that grant. We've got some applications underway, so we'll hopefully be using that, those funds fairly quickly. And the second is the over-the-counter program, where we can apply for funds on a project-by-project basis. Usually they are at least, are larger projects, and at least $250,000. The city can apply for, or can receive, no more than 2.5 million per fiscal year from this program. And the Economic Development Advisory Commission has recommended that the city submit another enterprise fund application this year, should funding become available, and also apply for an over-the-counter grant if we find a strong applicant or project. Any questions on the economic development allocation?
Mr. Beers?
Yeah, the only question, do you consult with the chamber at all on this? I know you went to EDAC, but did you get input from the chamber at all?
We have spoken to Denise Seals, she's been supportive, but in the past, not specifically related to this particular application. Okay, no other questions, I'll go on to planning and technical assistance grants. These, in the past, have been limited to $70,000 for general allocation and $70,000 for economic development, and this is for studies and plans related to CDBG-eligible projects. In the past, the city has received a number of these grants. We've done things such as the Brighton-Broderick Neighborhood Strategy that's underway currently, the Mobile Home Park Survey, development of the Arlington Oaks Sewer Project. There has been quite a few programs and projects that have benefited from these studies and plans. The restaurant study that was done last fall was also a PTA grant funded. We have a recommendation from the HAC and the EDAC this year to concentrate these funds on one project that composes both economic development and housing opportunities for TIG low-income residents. And that would be planning that leads to the development of the Delta Lane Affordable Housing Project at the entrance to the Bridge District, and plans or studies that support the feasibility study for that same area, which is 801 Risky Lane, 815 West Capitol Avenue, and 820 or 824 West Capitol Avenue. The HAC did have a secondary priority, and that would be plans or studies that continue the implementation of the homeless tenure plan. Any questions? We expect these to, applications to, HCD says they'll probably come out in the fall.
All right. Well, to pick up on Mr. Kristof's question on the first one, because it also applies with Delta Lane and a couple of these other issues with respect to if we have excess supply of publicly subsidized affordable housing units at West Capitol Courtyard, just as, or Courtyard Two as an example, whether, and we have a market where market rate housing is much more affordable than it was just a few years ago, then how, how high of a priority ought it be for us to be making further investments in the development of new housing, of new publicly subsidized affordable housing? I think that's a very, I mean, it is a legitimate, important public policy question. In the case of Delta Lane and a couple of these others, to me, the issue that isn't so much about our need to expand the amount of affordable housing, although, you know, in the long run, we will still need more, and it's better to build and acquire it now while it's cheaper than to wait until the market's insane again and try to do it at that point. But also, to the extent that we are doing this in order to build our bank and to meet our, help meet the obligations, the inclusionary obligations of projects that, that we want to see advance, market rate projects in the Bridge District and West Capitol Avenue and elsewhere, that these are important projects to advance even, even in the, in the context of the demand issues that, that we're seeing, that the HDC is seeing at West Cap Courtyard. So I mean, I had the same question, but I think they make sense for other reasons, actually, than the actual, than the, than the actual demand at the moment for the units that we're building. It's perverse, but that's the, I mean, it, in the long run, it's the sensible approach to advance our economic development objectives. And I just, you know, given, given what the, you know, happened with the court ruling and the overall state of our finances and tax revenues generally, have we gone through each of these funding programs to make sure that we've exhausted every opportunity in them that might be available to help, help offset other things that we're going to have to reduce as a result of budget reductions from the general fund and other sources?
We've had many conversations at the staff level as to how these, these applications would affect the, our limited staffing, because we have reduced staff, and also how it would affect our ability to pay for existing staff. The expectation would be that the planning and technical assistance application would probably be in-house rather than out to a consultant, so that would be $140,000 that would be used for staff salaries, unless at that time, we simply don't have the capacity to do it, but that's, that is the thinking at this point.
All right. Then let's open the public hearing on Item 18. And we do have a couple of requests to speak on this, this first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell. He went off on me again. Yes, I didn't see any specifics as to what this money might be used for, but considering what's been happening and what I feel is needed, I think we should consider more bus benches and shelters and modification of existing shelters to make them cooler, like the one across the street. We don't need as much of a north wall because it gets so much warmer in there during the summertime than it, I mean, you're in the shade, true, but there's no circulation. And, and we could, we could also have midday bus runs to and from our industrial area so that people would have more time to get to and from those places to apply for jobs as well as work part-time and jobs other than the eight to five jobs. And I think we should seriously consider a federal, a federal or state grant to finance extension speakers for our city hall so that people out in the audience can better hear what we're saying at the podium and, and what our city council members are saying, especially when the heater and the air conditioning are on. And that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell? And Leonel Hall and Scott Thurmond?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Leona Joel. I'm the Executive Director at the Yolo Wayfarer Center Christian Mission in Woodland. We are the Yolo County Emergency Shelter, and I wanted to thank you tonight for two things. First, your support of the tenure plan, which was a long planning process that was really led by your staff and was, was greatly appreciated by the entire coalition, but also your support of the countywide emergency shelter, which is where I reside and direct. The, we would like to consider using some of the CDBG funds that are available to partner with the City of West Sacramento in doing a project. The plan specifically emphasizes the need for housing specifically for those individuals, as we discussed, 30% or below of income. And this is really critical in helping those families that are homeless and making a transition. We have been very successful through our programs in moving folks from emergency shelter into treatment programs and then into transitional living. And from that transitional living, we have an 86% success rate in moving folks into market housing. So it's really a way to help individuals get back into contributing back to their communities and be able to afford market rate housing by giving them this option of finding some very low-income housing to get back on their feet and stabilize their families. We would be working together with Friends of the Mission, who does all of our capital development projects, and they have an extensive history in building transitional housing, affordable, permanent-supported housing, and our emergency shelter and other programs. And I'll let Scott fill you in a little more about that.
Currently, we have, in partnership with the Wayfarer Center, housed, or we provide 150 beds within the City of Woodland. And we look forward to partnering, we've been dialoguing with your staff over recent months about potentially partnering for a project within West SAC to serve the residents of West SAC. And we look forward to providing that high-quality housing that you would see in Woodland that we provide, we've provided on a consistent basis. So we, we're asking for your consideration within the CDBG process when you make your final decision a month from now, providing housing for families and singles within the community.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, those are our only requests to speak, so we'll close the public hearing on Item 18. Louise, anything further based on the public comment? You have anything to tell us about their proposal? Well, no, I'm just giving you the opportunity to provide any additional information based on what we've just heard. You're aware of it?
Oh, absolutely. This is something in, in concept, we've been discussing for a while, as we've gone through the tenure plan process, is the need for, we have transitional housing in West Sacramento, we don't have permanent housing for extremely low-income persons, and especially permanent housing that has supportive services. And that's a very difficult thing to come up with because lots of times you can find the capital funds for the development of a project, but to find a way to finance supportive services long-term is difficult. And that's something that Friends of the Mission and Wayfarer has been working on, and they feel that they've come up with a, a pretty strong financial plan for a project. And so they've been talking to us about this for, for a while now. And this seems to be an opportune time. We don't have another really strong CDBG project or program this particular year. So this is, is an opportune time to help them get their project off the ground.
Mr. Kristof?
Louise, I guess I'll go back to what I was talking a little bit about earlier. I mean, we've got a brand-new project on West Capitol Avenue, affordable housing project. The H, our HCD hasn't been able to fill theirs up, and we're talking about putting other, in essence, projects together. And if we don't have the vacancy, I mean, if we have a large vacancy rate, what are we doing?
Well, if this is a project that Wayfarer is doing, these will be people who have, they, they want, they have a lot of people in their shelter and in their transitional housing program that are coming from West Sacramento. They're wanting housing that these people can afford, and they can move back to West Sacramento to their community of origin, where their friends, where their family, where their support services are located. And so, yeah, their clients are going to be coming into these units. So they, they-
But their clients are not going into the units on West Capitol Avenue, or they're not going into the units that are, that are vacant at Capitol Courtyard?
Not the ones that are extremely low-income, and my, and basically because they can't afford, they don't, they can't afford the rents. Even though they are affordable, they're not affordable, for example, someone that's on SSI that's making $12,000 a year, the, an apartment, even a low-income apartment is, is, is over their budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johannesburg?
Maybe just to chime in on that, the HDC is really, they're looking into providing some kind of supportive services now as a way to decrease the vacancies, but it's not the function of that organization to do the supportive services. And I know the folks down at this 30% or below median income, those are the folks that are borderline homeless, that, that need some type of intervention, need, need something before they're on the streets or living on the river. And the folks that are going into the HDC are just low-income folks and not the very, very low-income. So it is a, I think it's a pretty distinct contrast between the tenants in both places. And the service that we would provide, for example, in the HDC would be, you know, like internet, internet access, and, and things that are, I think are a lot higher level than, than Leona's doing in Woodland.
Further questions or discussion on Item 18? All right, is there a motion?
I need to pick up in the staff report that we were looking for proposals at the evening. I appreciate the idea that we should be considering them, but did I hear that within a month, we're actually going to be looking to, to, to more further refine what it is we want to do there? Is that-
Absolutely. The applications are due June 25th, so we anticipate bringing that resolution to the council for approval of an application, the, the second meeting in June.
Okay. Okay. Mine, yeah. Well, I know, well, we've got a whole lot of different needs within the community. I know that I've had opportunity to talk to staff about what other things we may want to consider in the future, and so maybe as, as a part of the conversation that we might have next time, we can, we can have that presentation as well. I think it's helpful to have a larger conversation about what we're looking at in the future in addition to specifically what we would, what we would project to do with these funds should we be awarded the, the opportunity.
So you're not, you're not, so you're not talking about something for the June 25th application?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not.
Some of this stuff's not ripe.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've had conversations with staff, and I don't know to what extent it needs to be ripened further than, than it is at the moment, but the idea has floated around, and we, and there are partners in the community who are interested in supporting transitional age foster youth in our community. We have a disproportionately high number of foster youth in our community. There's been some recent outreach in certain circles to try and create a higher profile for the need for housing. As we all know, once they turn 18, there's not a whole lot available. And so I understand there are other funding opportunities that we could consider should we decide to go down that route. So I don't want to get ahead of staff in that respect, but I know that, I was planning on speaking about it this evening, but I do think that's probably something that we ought to bring into the equation as we, as we go down this road.
And can I assume we've already examined whether or not it's possible to use any of these funding streams for preschool? I'm guessing at some point Ms. Richardson has marched into your office, Louise, and said, "I need $100,000 to sustain preschool." And you've said, you've given her some magic show about how many points it would get.
CDBG funds possibly would be, could be used for preschool, it just depends on how it was structured, as to whether it would score well. And we've, we've funded one, Montessori preschool, we're trying to fund another one with economic development funds, those, but general allocation, I would, I would just have to have a conversation to determine whether that that was, be possible.
I would just ask that you do, that you look into it. And second is, June 25th is more likely than not going to be shortly after the announcement on the Streetcar Awards. And in our meetings with HUD, you know, they've indicated that CDBG funds, the support in some way of streetcar projects are eligible expenditures under CDBG now. Of course, their focus is on entitlement cities, so they're, they're, you know, that conversation's been about eligibility, not around competitiveness. But if we, if we succeed, if we pull a rabbit out of the hat and, and get one of these very large federal grants for the streetcar project, we're still going to have to come up with $10 million or potentially more. And so, you know, we're going to need to be scraping every possible pot if this is, if this, if there's any possible way to direct that. And if there isn't, then I'd, you know, I'd like to know, you know, so I'd like to do a follow-up conversation with both, with the Regional Office of HUD and HUD in DC around any work that they might be able to do with the state to help leverage that, because we're going to be, we're going to be, need to find money every possible place in order to make that grant successful if we, if we, if we get the federal, if we get the federal dollar. So if we could get a placeholder and get some work, you know, some basic staff level work done on it so that we're prepared, if necessary, by June 25th to, to move forward. Then is there, I've seen no further discussions, there a motion on this item?
I'd move it.
Mayor Bertamiegas has moved, and Mr. Johannesburg has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing done, that motion carries.
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kristof, that motion carries for 01. And carries. Item 19 is a public hearing and request for consideration of Joint Resolution 10-26 approving the purchase and sale agreement for the sale of an agency-owned property located at 1080 Sacramento Avenue to the Russian Church of Evangelical Christian Baptist. Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Mark Solow, I'm with the Redevelopment Agency. The property under consideration was acquired shortly after a city incorporation for a planned public safety facility. That plan was abandoned when the police department moved to its current location on Triangle Court. The larger portion of the original property was sold to the Russian Church of Christian Evangelical Baptist in 2002, and the remaining 1.2 acres was planned for a fire station. The purchase of the future station site on Harbor Boulevard and Riverfront Development have changed the fire department's station plan, making the 1080 Sacramento Avenue location unsuitable. Meanwhile, the church is successfully executing its development plan and has acquired adjacent property as part of that plan. The church would like to purchase the- adjacent property as part of that plan. The church would like to purchase the property for additional parking for its two-thousand-member congregation. Staff conducted a value analysis of the property and finds the selling price reasonable and recommends sale of the property and the reservation of easements for two existing drainage lines that traverse the property. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Solo? All right, seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on item nineteen. We have no requests to speak on this, but it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Marty just looks angry. He doesn't want to make sense of speak. Is there any further discussion? It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mayor Potem Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and the opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Item nineteen is adopted. Item twenty is consideration of purchase and sale agreement for city purchase of land from Bridge District Riverfront LLC for a Riverfront Park improvement in the Bridge District. Ms. Jacobson?
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'm Katie Jacobson with Redevelopment Agency for the city. Tonight, staff is recommending a council approval of a purchase and sale agreement with Bridge District Riverfront LLC and delegate, approval of delegated authority to the city manager to execute the purchase-sale agreement after final legal descriptions have been incorporated. The staff is recommending that the city acquire the property for Riverfront Park in the Bridge District area of the city. The property is being acquired for the first phase of Bridge District Park improvements, which are financed by a one point seven million dollar River Parkway's state grant, also known as the Prop fifty grant, and that grant includes a two-and-a-half million dollar local matching fund commitment, which is in the city's CIP. That grant was awarded to the city in two thousand and eight. The agreement also provides for a grant of non-exclusive easement for features of the park improvements that extend onto the private property. The property is located along the waterfront in the Bridge District of the city. Acquisition of this property by the city was an element of a larger overall negotiation with the two property owners that stepped up to commit to build the market-rate units that ultimately secured the twenty-three point one million dollar Proposition One C grant. BDR is committed to build one hundred of those Proposition One C committed units, as council is aware from the development agreement with BDR that passed on consent calendar tonight. This purchase was also coordinated with the city's flood team, and in April, the agency completed a Phase One report and found no direct evidence of hazardous substances. A title report has been completed, and BDR is obligated to remove any exceptions that the city finds unacceptable prior to close of escrow. This is a diagram of the redesigned Riverwalk Trail improvements that the property is being acquired for. It is to be completed by two thousand and eleven. The original grant scope of work was to fund the full improvements on the Ramos parcel adjacent to Tower Bridge. However, the design had to be revised after grant award due to changes in the Army Corps of Engineers requirements with regard to vegetation and tree removal, and an updated hydrology analysis for the levee that indicated that the extent of levee reconstruction would render the original design and scope infeasible, both in terms of budget and schedule. When these changes emerged in the fall, the city secured approval from the Resources Agency for a revised scope of work that, in essence, built a multipurpose flood-fighting road along the two-hundred-year levee crown and included furnishing shade structures and interesting pavement treatments at the intersection of the access streets and the trail to serve recreational needs. The access streets are being built as part of the Proposition One C scope of work, and the Riverwalk Trail was scored in the Proposition One C grant proposal as a park amenity. Under the purchase agreement, the property shown in the black diagonal parallel lines on this slide will be acquired by the city. The westward boundary of the acquisition is the two-hundred-year flood levee crown. The purchase agreement is for approximately a hundred and forty thousand feet of property that extends from the westward boundary of the two-hundred-year flood levee crown to the waterward hinge line or ten-year flood mark. As you can see in this next slide, this shows the division of the property that's being acquired into the two areas. The total land price is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred for the property that's shown or depicted by the parallel diagonal lines. That's the property that's east of the ten-year flood mark or waterward hinge line. For the property west of the ten-year mark that's depicted in crosshatch markings, there is a, the agreement provides for a twenty-five thousand dollar per parcel payment to clear tidal. By acquiring full tidal for all of the property, even that that lies below the ten-year flood mark, the city is paving the way for future in-water features to be pursued and permitted. The ten-year flood mark or waterward hinge line was identified by city flood engineers as the appropriate proxy for property that had a good chance of being underwater during wet season and not available for recreation. The total price of five hundred and thirty-nine nine hundred is programmed into the first bond issuance from CFD twenty-seven, which received enough ballots yesterday for approval. Tax increment will advance the funds until the city receives the bond proceeds.
What tax increment?
In addition to the property purchase, the agreement obligates BDR to grant a non-exclusive easement extending five-foot landward of the trail for utilities and lighting, and a very small additional area needed for what we call the node surface improvements, the shade structures and furnishings, which will be constructed at the intersection of the path and Riverfront access streets. All of the improvements and features of this path are, have been designed in order that, to allow relocation. All the lighting, the furnishings, and the shade structures will be able to be relocated when the final promenade is designed and the location is finally defined after flood improvements have been made. Property owners in the district have been negotiating an easement deed with the California Department of Water Resources and Central Valley Flood Protection Board for many years. The flood easement establishes a no-build line along the waterfront. Execution of this easement by the state is a condition of the seller for close of escrow, or the seller must waive it in order to allow escrow to close if the state does not execute it within the forty-five-day escrow period. Staff is working with the property owners on this action. The Bridge District-specific plan prioritizes early investment in a Riverfront Park to create an identity and catalyze private investment. The balance of site control and public access rights for the path improvements that are not on the BDR property have already been acquired through easement dedications from the other two property owners, Smart Growth Investors Two and Ramos. The property acquired in this purchase and sale agreement with BDR is the final acquisition needed for the Bridge District Riverwalk improvements, and staff is recommending approval, and that concludes my presentation.
Other questions for Ms. Jacobson? All right, we have no workers to speak on items. There are discussion? Had moved by Mr. Beers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kristof. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and the opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Item is approved. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out that the police department is going to be having some upcoming community meetings at consecutive Tuesdays at the various schools in West Sacramento, Bridgeway Elementary on the eleventh, Westmore Oaks on the eighteenth, and Riverbank on the twenty-fifth, and then the annual state of the city is taking place on May twelfth, and then our fire department is going to have, I think, the first open house we've ever, that I can remember, at the Fremont Station on Feb, on May twenty-second at ten a.m., Fire Station Forty-four.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report.
Just an update from the item earlier this evening. The police chief informs me that the community response team will be visiting that neighborhood this evening and investigating the problem.
Very good, great. That's fast. Any questions for the city manager report? City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction for members of the council. Mr. Beers?
Well, you know, I didn't follow up on your report this evening on the vegetation issue, but is there something more specific? I mean, my understanding is that the federal register has been published on this issue. Are we going to specifically respond as a city to this with our concerns? I mean, I just don't want to go down silent on it.
Well.
Well, no, I mean, I just think-
I mean, I don't, I-
No, I think we just need to at least formally put our position out there on this.
I mean, I don't think anybody likes the fact that, you know, the vegetation trees, blah, blah, along the levees and this. I don't think anybody likes it, but, you know, if you've got Big Brother out there saying either this is what you do, or, you know, there, this is what's going to happen, you know, you're going to get mapped, or you're going to get, you're not going to get the funds that, as quickly as whatever it is. And I don't know the answer. I mean, but I mean, I just, I think we walk a delicate tightrope. I mean, I agree with you. You want to send a letter that says something, hey, look, we want as many trees as we can possibly have. I mean, we think that they do hold the ground together, you know, all the arguments that are being made for flood protection and keeping the vegetation. You know, I don't have any problem with that, but I mean, it's just that I would really hate to push the envelope and have something negative happen, and maybe it wouldn't, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. It just-
I don't either.
And I'm not as familiar with the federal regulatory process as I was with the state, but once they're published, you, you're, there's a period of time to comment, and I would believe if that's still available, that we should formally comment. That's not to say if the final rule comes down, we won't have to comply.
No, I understand.
But I don't, I don't want it ever misunderstood for not just aesthetic reasons, but for very significant other reasons. We aren't, in my view, supportive of that federal regulatory scheme.
Our plan at this point was not to have a separate comment from the city, but to involve ourselves, as we have, with groups who are commenting on it and to be sure that our interests are reflected in their comments. We, through, either through the JPA or the city, belong to a number of agencies that will be tracking and responding. So we can't, we could respond separately. We haven't been encouraged to do that more, not because there would be any kind of retribution, but because our political cloud is limited, and we try to make it highly focused in these areas.
All right, so the answer is we are aggressively participating in this discussion.
Yes, but through, through other interviews.
I understand.
Yes, that's correct.
Apparently, when we went with the Corps, the lieutenant, the lieutenant colonel that was in the room pulled me aside at the end and said, "You know, I can't mention this, but there's a Senate bill that would fix this." So I don't know if we've, if Mr. Panis has brought that to your attention, but it might be something for us to follow up on as well. The lieutenant colonel that's responsible for the inspections to catch people doing this and who I think recognizes that this is not a good policy, this is silly policy.
It is silly, because I mean, even if you cut down-
Even if you don't want to encourage, even if you don't want to encourage the planting of new vegetation to go out and tell cities and levy districts to rip trees out is going to compromise.
And then look what you do when you rip a tree out and you rip the roots out. I mean, look, I mean, you take the whole structure of the dang levee with you. I mean, it is, it's-
Prospectively, you know, do what we have to do, but the existing levee system is the existing levee system, and it can't just be capriciously changed based on some policy that was, I mean, you could argue that everyone was following the Corps policy before Katrina, and look what happened. So there's nothing magic about Corps policies.
Right.
It's only as good until, it's only as good until a disaster overcomes it, and then they say, oh, well, here's the new policy, so.
Remember, Viegas?
Toby, I know the staff, engineering staff has looked at it before, but I'm wondering if things have slid back a little bit in terms of the timing of the lightings, the lights, southbound on Jefferson Boulevard, or, excuse me, northbound on Jefferson Boulevard in the AM peak hours.
The synchronization?
Yeah, I think at one point, they were pretty well synchronized. I think traffic was moving, but it seems like with that, particularly with that one intersection that the, that the council has talked about in the past, it seems at least that the amount of time that that one is-
Staying.
Is staying is a bit more than that one car that makes the turn on it, and so it's holding up everything in the morning, and I think it's gotten off.
I've noticed the same thing.
It's awful.
Okay, it's awful.
We'll take a look at it.
Be polite.
All right, we have no future agenda requests. Mr. Beers moves.
Second.
Mr. Kristof seconds. Let this meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and the opposed, hearing done. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.